To either video, thank you. Either to if anyone else would like to video or audio tape this meeting. They are informed that they must let me know as such. That is that and do we have any I can't get that off. Do we have any agenda changes?
No.
Great. Um, then I guess I will start with priority business and go to the computer for my.
Martha, did you want to start with public?
I don't think there's anybody here.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to speak as a public.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Joan, please, um, of course, citizen speak.
Citizen speaks.
I am sorry.
So it was suggested that I just fill you in just for a moment on Maurice's campground. And the sale that has been put together, if it's approved by. The town in September, and I'm on one of the committees for it. And the reason that I felt so strongly about it has to do with the schools. I mean, I'm connected to businesses also, but I'm also connected to the school and seeing populations. Not people not being able to get housing. And as Brooke said, even for her, housing was crazy in this in this district. So the idea that people cannot afford to live here means that we will have less young families and less children to come to our wonderful school. So I would just very shortly say to you, if you haven't gone on the wealth fleet housing.org site of the town, our communication organization committee has kept an updated, most recent in the front in the top. Listing of everything that we're doing, it's a public meeting so that you can also see the meetings should you want to. And there's five committees, four beside the communication committee committee. And I am just so impressed with the quality of people that are volunteering to inspect the infrastructure and the buildings and the septic and that the finances and the whole, how would it operate? You know, would it be the town, would we, would we lease it out? How, because it's going to stay as it is for about six years, up to six years. It's a very exciting project and. The nature groups and housing groups have come together and have said that Lawrence in Wellfleet, they've done the whole state, but in on Lawrence Road and Maurice's campground are the two areas that wealth fleet should consider for affordable housing. So that's all I'm going to say, it's very exciting. If anybody wants to call me and have more discussion about it, I'm totally immersed in this now. Very excited about it. Okay.
Joan, thank you very much, and I am so delighted that you offered to step up and be our representative there. That committee meets really often and they do an awful lot of work. It's it's all brain work.
It's very impressive, I'm impressed.
Well, I'm impressed at you, so. Thank you so much, Joan. Does anybody have any questions for Joan before we move on or comments? We're all just glad you're doing that, so. Laura.
Oh, can I mute it?
I just, I just want to add like, that's great. And also think, I mean, housing for teachers is is also really important and that we should really be thinking about that. In whatever way we can, but I think for families and for teachers, so.
Two teachers, two teachers at at top salaries cannot afford to live in Wellfleet. So that's that goes for police, that goes for fire, that you know, so we're to, you know, and restaurant people and all the rest, but yeah, teachers are right up there.
Sure. Thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
I will give my chair report. I just want to start off with a little anecdotal at our town meeting. Betsy came over to where Laura and I were sitting together. Jill was right in front of us, Joan was over to the left, and she handed me this. So I guess I really am the chair now. I keep thinking she might come back, but this is it. I don't know what to do with it on a Zoom meeting, so I just carry it around and looking for.
So use it on your folks.
Anyway, it's been a busy month here in Wellfleet and in the entire district. I'd like to begin by thanking members of this committee for their generous contributions, both in time and in money to the appreciation breakfast for the staff and faculty at Wellfleet Elementary School. The entire committee helped put this event together and it was a true team effort. I am so grateful. I also would like to acknowledge Jennifer Flanagan, who somehow the next day managed to get a card to me. I still don't know how it quite got there. And a thank you note to all of us, which I have misplaced in the chaos that is my home with four children. Did she send one to everybody? Laura, did you get one? Oh, you have the card? What are you showing?
From someone else, sorry.
Okay, oh, good, 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 okay, yeah, sure.
Mrs. DeShawn.
I know I will find it, but it's somewhere on the floor. I would also like to thank the people of Wellfleet for the continued, consistent and generous support that was evident at our town meeting and during our town elections. Our voters prove every year how important the school system is to everybody. Fortunately, our town meeting passed articles for our school and district and for the families of Wellfleet, as well as articles that would ensure the safety of our community. This was reaffirmed on June 25th, 21st, when our town came out to vote on these ballot questions. We're so fortunate to be in a town that puts the care of its people first. During the last week or two, actually, it was probably longer than that now. I've had the pleasure of attending two events that highlighted the values and heart of our community. The Wellfleet Elementary School theme parade through town is a special treat always. It brings all ages and all people together to enjoy a part of school life that embodies our town's culture. The children are talented, adorable, and of course, like the children in Lake Wobegon, gifted. The parade watchers are full of pride and awe. It's an event, in fact, that brings the entire town together. What a joy it is to watch. Thank you to the West staff and to our principal for putting this together for us. And thank you to the children of Wellfleet Elementary School for entertaining us all with aplomb. The other event was, and of course, the theme was be kind, which is so important right now. It's ingenious, and there were all kinds of pollinators. The other event was the Nauset High School graduation, which took place on a stellar day. Because I'm in, because I am fortunate to be part of a wonderful Wellfleet family. I sat in the first row as rather vertically challenged, half-hearing elder. That means the world to me. Firsthand, I was able to watch each student's unique walk, each student's pose and smile for the camera and each student's expression as they waited to receive diplomas. I was struck with the poise, the confidence and the originality of these young people and with the support and love that they gave each other. It's such an honor to be part of this amazing town and this amazing school system. And I wish everyone a wonderful, sun-filled summer of happiness, health and growth. Respectfully submitted Martha Gordon. Any questions? Laura, would you like to read that card? Before we move on?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. D West School Committee, thank you for the goodies the other day. We have made it through another year. Thanks for your support of our efforts. Sincerely, Sue DeShawn.
How nice. And Principal Rodman, are you ready for the last report of the year?
I am, and thank you all for treating us that morning. By, I would say, 11:11, 11:15, there wasn't a scrap left. So everything was gobbled up. Thank you very, very much. And just a couple of things to add to my report. On the first page, under new hire, I forgot to put the actual date at the very end. It's June 8th, it was June 8th for our class placement meeting that Mr. Purcell or Purcell, I'm sorry, he prefers Purcell, had participated in with Mr. Miller. And I am in the process now of onboarding our new grade three teacher. So as soon as that hiring process is complete, I'll be emailing all of you, as well as the West families on who the new hire is. And as you can see, we have reprioritized our after-school childcare program. And it's due to the fact that we have a very difficult time staffing that program, especially if we have a staff member out. It's been nearly impossible to secure a sub. Recruiting subs for an after-school program has been quite challenging. I have filled in, my administrative assistant has filled in. I have begged and pleaded with educational assistance and at least to stay until the numbers come down. So what we have done is we followed the blueprint, the template from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for a publicly funded childcare program. And their recommendation was a one to 13 ratio, and that's what we have stuck with. So we hire three people, but we only cap it at 26. In case we can't get a sub when somebody's out, we still stay within those parameters of the recommended ratio of staff to students. And what we have come to learn this year too is that not all parents are working. And it really was put together for our working families. So we really need to, it had within the template from Desi that it would be for working parents. It would potentially require proof of work. And I think we really need to move forward in ensuring that people who are accessing the program are in fact working parents. And since our students in grades K1 and 2 are unable to go home without an adult or a parent, we want to prioritize enrollment for those three grade levels. So we have anticipated 12 students moving into kindergarten. So we'll start with kindergarten as soon as it's filled, all the kindergarten working parents have access to enrollment. We'll then move on to grade one families that are working and then grade two until we get to a total of 26. We are down a staff member, so luckily we had a former student who was home from graduate school. So she has filled in as our sub. So we kind of moved that process along quickly so that she could be on boarded as a sub. So we're very grateful to her and that is Kenne Valley. So grateful to her to be able to do that. So that is the change that has been made to our after-school childcare program. The other thing that I wanted to note on page two at the bottom. We had Payamit Performing Arts Center come for their circuit day. Lassie, I think is how they worded it. And they did provide a one-week scholarship to a student and the recipient is Nora Hay from grade one. And I think the last thing is under school events. If you could add for tomorrow night, June 29th, the grade five celebration will be held at 5:30 in the gymnasium. And that does it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mary Beth? Laura?
Yeah. I know, I know the after-school childcare is really tough. I get it. But is, I mean, is there any way to, if there's not 26 registered to move up? I mean, I know third graders can legally get off the bus by themselves, but I. It's really tough. And I don't know, it's just, I mean, is there any other thing we can do to reach out? I don't know, to rec or, I mean, it's just a tough thing for working parents of third and up. Is there any other, anything else we can do or offer?
I think that, you know, if we're not at 26, that absolutely our goal is to be at capacity. So yes, right now, our focus is to make sure that kiddos that cannot get off the bus without a parent, that they have first priority if their parent or parents are working. And certainly, if we do not fill to capacity with K1 and 2 students, we could certainly move off to grade three. The the goal is always to be at capacity.
Any, any other comments or questions? Mary Beth, I do have one actually about that because I, I want to make sure I understand. Have you been, has it been strictly enforced already that this program is for working parents?
Yes, it was always in the handbook.
Yeah.
First year, the year before COVID, we were very good about it. And it's, it's really challenging, I think, when it comes to parents who are self-employed. For parents who are part-time parents. So we did have in there the caveat that proof of working may be required. So we kept that in there.
Yeah, good.
So in this case, we would like to move forward that the proof of working is part of the enrollment process as opposed to going through the process and then if we needed to ask for it. So right now, we're down to two out of the three staffs and we'll be posting for the third. And it's going to be very challenging to get a third person, but of course, we're going to try.
I wonder if it makes sense, whether it's even in our purview to, since, you know, we did as a committee have to, you know, say this was a great idea. And. I wonder if it makes sense for us to spend a lot of time, not this summer, but during the next school year for figuring out, how can we make this job more attractive to people? What, what can we do in terms of budget or what can we do in terms of offering people not only an after-school program, but they can maybe be actually bus drivers? Wouldn't that be great, except that wouldn't help? But substitute teaching positions or that kind of thing.
Say that for the job, it's the hours that are not attractive.
Right, right. So if they had other commitments and other things to do in through, through the school, it might make it more attractive for them.
And, you know, people who have been able to fill in from the school as substitutes, it's fatiguing. It's fatiguing to be working full day with young kids and then to continue until 5:30 in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
You know, staff were in by 7:30 the latest, so it just makes for a very long, fatiguing day.
It is, it is. Joan?
What happens if the job was simply an after-school job and not a vacation time? If you, if you, if you took that out of it, where every parent that's working knows when the vacations are well, well in advance and possibly could hire babysitters or have friends and collaboratively take care of each other's children? There's all sorts of creative ways to do that during vacation, which doesn't work after school. Would you attract more people if it was simply, if you separated that out?
I don't think I'm following Joan.
So isn't part of the problem of hiring people that it's not only after school, but it's school vacations too?
No, it's not.
Oh.
No, it's not school vacations, it's just after school on school days.
Okay.
So it's from dismissal, that's okay, it's from dismissal from 2 o'clock until 5:30.
Okay.
On our early release days, and typically we have one every month except for the month of June. And it is from 11 o'clock until 5:30. But we don't have over-vacation weeks.
Okay, all right. And that, that, that once a month is not a snag particularly in this program for hiring people. Like they're not saying, I can do it from 2:30, from 2 o'clock to 5:30, but I can't do it on your, on your teacher workdays. All right, thank you.
It's challenging, I mean, it. The previous childcare that was in there was space that was loaned and they got down to three kids. And so when I had proposed this to the school committee, it was proposed as making it part of our appropriations, our budget, so that it would be free for working parents up to 26 kiddos. So, you know, to accommodate people who needed childcare, we were, if we had all three in, we have parents calling up until 10 o'clock in the morning. So if all three people are in, then we would add more children, up to 13 more kids. So, you know, we try to be as accommodating as we can. It's difficult for parents too who work seasonally because they don't need childcare until April rolls around. So it's hard to fill 26 spots. And then hold those spots for people when they come back, because it's difficult to say to a parent, I can give it to you up until April, but we have done that. So again, we try to accommodate as much as we can. The biggest snafu is having three staff consistently. And it's free. You know, I mean, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for our working parents. So we just want to make sure that those are the parents that we're servicing, you're serving, that we're able to provide them quality childcare that's recognized by Desi. And in that those parents are in fact working.
One, just one other thought, and that is if, if we didn't offer it for free for everyone, does that mean? And what if we didn't, what if we had scholarships and we actually awarded people who really couldn't fund it themselves? And we had some sort of a different way of looking at it budget-wise? And that, that's not something to talk about tonight, obviously, because it's not on the agenda. But I just wonder if that's something we could look at in the fall.
It really, it has to do with staffing more than anything.
But if we could afford more, to give the staff more money.
Yeah, I think it might be. The feedback that I have gotten from people is that it's the hours.
Yeah.
It's not the money, it's been the hours.
Okay, all right. Um, Jill?
Again, we agreed this is a discussion for another time, but just a quick thought. I know that the 4C's offers an early childhood degree. And, you know, I know that for Desi to approve, even the teachers, often teachers have to have minimal requirements, whether it's course requirements or whatever. But I do know somebody who's in the early childhood program at the 4C's. And typically their classes are in the evening. And I'm wondering, and again, we're not going to figure this out tonight, but it's just another idea that the job perhaps could get posted at the 4C, so there's psychology classes there. There's some. Early childhood, so possibly a staff member for the after-school could be gotten through the college.
We've done it.
Okay, sorry. And again, we're thinking and then we can definitely submit ideas for the future another time.
Maybe, maybe we can table it for now and bring it up at our October meeting as just something to talk about, to brainstorm or, or think about, does that make sense to people? Yeah, I know, Mary Beth, that you have done everything you possibly can to. It's, it's out of, it's nothing that you can do anything about, and I know you've tried. Please understand that, you know, you've, you've thought about it for a long time, so. Thank you. We can't fix everything, I have to remind myself of that. Anyway, anything else for Mary Beth? Superintendent Clenchey?
Great, thank you so much. So just before I get into my report, I want to echo our chairperson's comments with regards to thinking Wellfleet, the Wellfleet community and for the support at the ATM and at the ballot box. These, this has been a tough year in a lot of ways. And please know how much we support or we are appreciative of Wellfleet's support. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I, again, too, I also just want to add a quick note. I think Principal Rodman has done yeoman's work with this program. And it's really, really hard when you get to a point where you've worked really hard to build something and then you look at it and say, I can't take this any further. I don't even know if I can, I can continue this. Like it's really, it's really a difficult place to be in. And so I too want to acknowledge and commend your efforts, Principal Rodman. You've just done an outstanding job. And sometimes there are just factors outside of our situation that we just can't control to keep something going. And I think the chairperson hit it right on the head, it's got nothing to do with you. This is something outside. But I'd also agree with Jill, I think, you know, in October, we come back to the table and see if there's, isn't something through brainstorming that maybe we, somebody thought like, I hadn't thought about the 4C's, but that was a really cool idea. You know, I can see that Mary Beth has, but you never know what ideas might be generated. So I would encourage that we bring this back up in October too. But Mary Beth, thank you for all of your work with it, it's just, it's just amazing, really. On my report too, the chairperson acknowledged graduation and I just want to say too, it was a wonderful day. So we want to add our note of congratulations to our Nauset graduating class of 2022. It was just a great graduation to be part of. We, we of course wish all of our graduates the very best as they move into the next phase of their lives beyond public schools. Their collective potential, I said this that day, is limitless. And we're excited to see where they go, what they do and what's on the horizon for them. A special note of thanks, I think, to everyone involved with graduation, the students, the families, the, the out-of-town guests that came, our staff, the class advisors. I watched Tony, you know, our head custodian, running around doing all kinds of things at that last minute, you know? And the chairs were just all perfectly set and measured exactly right. Everything was so clean and the grounds were all cleaned up and, oh my gosh, it was just, it was just a wonderful day. I know that Dr. Millen and I walked with Dr. Elsasser in leading the group that day and it was just a really special moment. So hats off to everyone for graduation 2022. Number two is just some staffing changes. This is the time of year, especially the, the first couple of weeks in June, where you tend to see a lot of changes happening. It's also the time of year where principals decide whether they're going to do renewals or non-renewals of certain contracts. So that's always a bit of a bumpy ride right across Massachusetts. It's not specific to Nauset, it happens everywhere. And of course, we're out looking for the new hires. Our principals are out doing yeoman's work, trying to get the new hires ready for their roster, whatever that looks like. Some key changes for us, of course, at the high school, and I know that you already know this, but for perhaps some of the, in the Wellfleet community that don't know about it. Pat Clark, of course, will be taking over Nauset Regional High School as the principal. And he has two new principals, assistant principals coming on board, Karen McGrath and Ho Yen Yun. And we are so excited, we really feel strongly that this is going to be a great triumvirate. Karen certainly has so much energy, it just, it comes into the room before she does. Ho Yen is very thoughtful and strategic and just incredibly bright. Karen has got tons of experience, she's also incredibly bright. And you look at that team and you say, this is, this is a moment of excitement. So we're really looking forward to, to next year for the high schools. It starts into a whole new, different era. We've also begun a full-fledged search for both the principal and assistant principal roles at Nauset Regional Middle School. The postings are advertised and the teams, hiring teams are being put into place. I know that Dr. Millen is taking a lead with that process, working of course with Joanna Hughes, our Director of Human Resources, and I believe Pat Clark will also be helping to support. And I believe Pat Clark will also be helping to support that, that particular process. When we do these processes, I just want to step back for a minute too. We really set about taking, um, a different pathway, particularly with our hiring. When I first came on board. And when it comes to especially administrative hiring, there's a pretty extential, uh, extensive process that we have in place right now. And we do have teams of people that continuously work on this and bring back the, the, the asset they can find in the pool. They go through an extensive process, they do site visitations, there's all kinds of work that goes into this. And so hats off to everybody who's been involved in one way or another throughout the course of this year in administrative searches, because they're not easy to do for sure. We also are just wrapping up, um, hopefully wrapping up our administrative search for the Eddie School. And, uh, so I think that the last day or so, I think, has kind of started to wrap that up. And I believe the committee is meeting again and look to see who they'll, uh, move forward, if they'll move anyone forward. So we're looking forward to that. So those are the key administrative, uh, changes that you're, you're going to see, um, at our level right now in terms of staffing changes. Uh, in terms of professional development, uh, there'll be several professional development opportunities this summer for staff. So there'll be something going out, uh, in the next couple of days that, that highlights that. The last thing for me is the newsletter, a special edition that we just sent out, uh, the other day with a focus on safety. And so if you were a parent, I think, or your school committee members should have all seen that. And we really wanted to separate that out from our regular newsletters, because it was just focused, um, on safety. Uh, the chiefs and I, again, the six chiefs, we, we have province, town, and rural, uh, meeting with our NOSA, um, chiefs for all the right reasons. And you know, as they would say, if something happens in any one of those six communities, you know that all six of those teams will be there. And so, uh, we've had a, a couple of really solid meetings as a, as a collective group. Just mapping out different strategies, mapping out philosophies, coming to consensus on certain things, and it feels like we're in a really good place. Uh, so we sent that addition out. You'll see us put a focus on it next year. I know Dr. Millen has also met with her professional development team. And I know that there's the desire for them to have safety as a key focus as we move forward. You'll see us do some training, um, in the first couple of days of school, and certainly in the first month of September. Um, just as we were renew and push reset with our Alice training. So, um, lots more to come, uh, in, in that area. Uh, but I did want to send out a special note, and of course, as you know, Chief Hurley did such a nice, um, a, a nice address, and you saw that we included that in, in that, because I thought that he just uh, nailed it out of the park, did a wonderful job with his, his comments and his posting. So I, we wanted to include that out and send it out to our broader community, because it really did encompass and embody, I think, what all of the chiefs were thinking. So that's it for me. Uh, happy to take any questions or comments that you might have. Joan.
Just wanted to thank you, because I think you did the first orientation, formal orientation for, um, new
I did.
New committee members. So that was fantastic. There were what, four of us there, maybe, right? And, um, and, and it wasn't as new for me, just because I've taken the charting the course and whatever, done that stuff. But it re-inspired me to read, to reread some of the things again. And so I appreciate the depth of this job. So I fabulous job with it, and it was a pleasure.
Thank you so much, and, and just for the committee members, and thank you, Joan, for saying something. Yes, you're right, it was my first, uh, one doing, and, and doing that in NOSA. And, um, what I really appreciated is I know that Arlen worked really hard at pulling together the, the slide deck. We talked about what, what were some key things that we wanted to put in there. But what I really appreciated, and I know the rest of the, uh, committee members will understand that, is the fact that we could refer to that school committee handbook. Because that's how we wrapped it up, because everything you really need to know is in that handbook. And so I, I personally felt like, you know, we, and we took, I thought the team that were there, was there last night, had some great questions, but the answers were all there. And how nice at our fingertips between the slide deck and the school committee handbook. Everything was there that they needed to know, and that felt really good as a superintendent, that we've got that kind of information right now at our fingertips, we can go to just quickly. And Arlen was able to pull it up right away and put it on, uh, the screen so we could walk through it. So thank you, Joan and Arlen, thank you so much for all of you that too.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brooke.
Of course, thank you.
Um, and I, we are, next on the agenda is Mallory from the Community Develop- Development Partnership, but I don't see her on. Do we have any idea? And she knew, I mean, I know she knew, you know she knew. Why don't we wait and, um, hopefully she, she will come in and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Wellfleet Elementary School Handbook Changes for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Principal Rodman, is that you?
That is me. So you have the, uh, one pager there. So just to, three updates, um, in one, well, two updates and one amendment. So the first update is that I'm replacing, typically I'll put into the handbook what I put into the town report. And that's our accomplishments, goals, priorities. So instead, I decided to do a personalized principal's letter to parents. So that's what will replace, um, the accomplishments, goals, and priorities. And, uh, secondly, it's to amend, as you, we just talked about the actual childcare program. And again, wanting a total of twenty-six registered students. And so I could make an amendment to the amendment to include, um, and then grade three, if we haven't reached capacity. And the third one is just our typical update of, uh, contact information. And we had worked just a little, uh, no, we had worked with, uh, Dr. Patty Grunier a few years ago. Because all of the elementary school handbooks were quite different. So we really wanted there to be this uniformity, but to still have its own flavor for each of our towns and our cultures. So what is really important to be in the handbooks, or in the handbooks that note things like McKinney-Bento, um, different policies that should be there, our matrix for, um, discipline, things like that. So there's uniformity now with all of the elementary handbooks. But again, some of the things are different that are germane to our schools. So that's it.
Thank you. Great. Any questions for Mary Beth or comments? Great. Um, okay, uh, the next thing, um, on the agenda is, uh, the meeting time for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And unfortunately, one of the people on the school committee who would be, um, affected by that. Okay. Um, anyway, I don't know where that's coming from. I know it's not me.
It's my husband's cell phone. It's in the bedroom.
This is why he never picks up his cell phone if you ever need to reach him. The, the prob- the thing that we wanted to talk about was, um, whether or not we could make the meeting a little bit earlier, um, especially for school, um, department staff. Because it makes the day, as Mary Beth pointed out, for people working in the after-school program. It does make the day extremely long. Um, and I know that, that Laura and Liberty are both working full-time. I know that Jill often has long days as well. When I first joined the school committee, we were meeting at four thirty. And then we moved it to five, and now we're at five thirty. And I wanted to consider that change for next year, if it's possible for people who are on the committee and working. For the sake of the people who are working in the schools, Laura. Laura.
Do we, do we have any direction on if it's going to be back in person?
We don't, but it's getting close to July fifteenth. So I'm guessing that, um, I don't know. Brooke, do you know anything about that?
We know nothing concrete, but certainly we know that there's got a lot about, um, uh, the potential of extending, for some period of time, uh, the, uh, the notion of remaining on Zoom. But we have absolutely nothing concrete right now. But I mean, we're all, we are all watching that July fifteenth, waiting to see what happens. So, uh, certainly as soon as we know something, we'll send that out. I mean, the other thing is you could wait if you wanted to wait for that particular, because that could make a difference for you for sure.
Yeah, and Joan?
That's a huge difference for me. I can tell, I mean.
It's a half an hour.
If I had to sit in my office and do it, I can, but.
Right.
Or sitting with my, you know, it, it would make a big difference, so.
I'm sorry. Do you think that there will have a choice?
I certainly don't have the answer to that. I mean, Arlen and I have had this conversation a hundred times, if we've had a thousand. Because it does, we, we completely agree with everything that you're saying. And, you know, it was, it, for some of our communities, I can see some of our communities staying either hybrid. And I don't know that anybody feels really strongly about going in person just yet. And you know, it's interesting, as you, as you walk around, I don't know if you've noticed, but it seems to be more and more people masking back up again. Certainly, you know, it's interesting, as we go, you know, we, we haven't gone north of the border, uh, very often. But we were up there, oh, maybe about four weeks ago. If you go into the grocery store in Canada, everybody is masked, absolutely everybody. And it's still like that, you know? So, um, I, I don't know what Governor Baker is going to do. But certainly, it, it seems like there's still some gray area that's out there right now. And I think people would prefer, for the most part, a hybrid if they could have it. I don't know that that's what's going to happen or not, though.
Yeah, I've been on the school committee when it wasn't Zoom. But I've certainly had my lifetime fill of meetings. And, um, not that I don't love meetings, I love meetings. But I, I don't see a disadvantage to this. Uh, and I've done both. Um, and it's probably an hour saving on either, you know, half an hour on either end, um, easily. So I just, I'm not even talking about COVID. I'm just talking about, does this work for people in a real way? That we're not losing anything by continuing, and maybe we're gaining, and maybe we'd get more young people on the committee, you know, in the future. Just seems like a win-win. I don't know.
And Jill, that's good. Thank you. Joan, Jill?
I agree with Joan. Uh, aside from COVID, I feel very strongly, we have time efficiencies. It also saves fuel. And yes, true, you know, when I do my site visits, I'm more available for a meeting from a hotel room than, you know, making it at home. But truly, I feel like it's time efficiencies, we're all scattered all over the place. And given a choice, I'm delighted to continue with Zoom.
Yeah, I feel the same way. Um, and it's not just because of COVID, we're a small enough group, our policy committee meets in person. But I do think that, um, in terms of, for example, for the school staff as well. It would seem to me that it's not such a hardship to have a meeting at five thirty if it's on Zoom. Because if you drive really fast, you can get home and still have your meeting from home at least. And, um, you know, it's, it's, I can tell that Giovanna is at work.
Giovanna and Robin are both still at work.
Of course they are.
Martha, that's a really good point, because I know, um, different from, from Gio and Robin, I try to get home so that I can take this meeting from home, you know? And then, and especially during the winters and such, then you're not driving through the dark on that way back and everything else. I, there's, I mean, I, I understand that face-to-face, there are certain things that happen in face-to-face conversations. I think I've said this before, you know, like, if you're walking out to the parking lot, you can solve a, a problem or whatever. And, and so you miss that component. But the, I would also agree with, um, a comment that Joan had made. I, I know that in talking to the superintendents, um, around the, the state, some of them are saying, we've have a bigger viewing audience while we're on Zoom than we're when we're in person. So you've got a number of, uh, school districts out there across the Commonwealth that are saying that they would prefer to stay Zoom just for the viewing audience. So i- it's, it's different everywhere, but it'll be interesting to see what, uh, Governor Baker does. I hope that he allows a choice, at least for the next year or so.
I guess we'll just wait and see. I am uncomfortable about changing the meeting time tonight to make it earlier without input from Liberty. And I guess that's the kind of thing I could write an email to, to my members about and just ask them to weigh in. And Laura, um, if we were meeting at five in person, would that not be doable for you? I mean, that's all we need to know, really.
I mean, I, I can't say for sure it's going to depend on what time of year, because I, I mean, this year, this time of year, I'm off at four o'clock. But I might have some days where I'm at a school until four thirty in the morning, so. It just depends. I, I, I can't, I can't say, um, but I, I mean, I'll do the best I can.
Okay.
If it's on Zoom, it's a lot easier. I'm just keeping saying that. I can't, you know, so.
Yeah. Okay. Um, well, let's keep our fingers crossed that it's on Zoom. And then, um, we may be able to move it up earlier, which would make people happier or some people happier, and it might be more doable for working people as well. For sure. Okay, um, well, I guess we'll have something to talk about this summer. I hope we don't have to vote, that's all. The next thing on the agenda is the, um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees Summer Institute, that looks absolutely fantastic, but it's in the summer. Um, so I'm wondering if anybody is interested. I don't know if you all got the information about it. It certainly looked relevant for chairs to go, but I don't know if I can. I have a son who's probably going to be having surgery on his heel. And he has an eight-month-old baby, almost nine-month-old. So I may have to be in Worcester on those. I can't commit to anything in July. Um, as much as I would love to, unless it were on, that's his dog. I'm going to mute. No, I can't. You guys? Um, anyway, I'm glad the meeting's not here tonight. Any, are there any people who are interested in attending? It's a one late day and one full day. It's a Friday evening, I think, and a Saturday all day. If I could, you know, play it by ear myself, I would love to go, and maybe I'll just try to do that. Is there anybody else who's interested in it? I think you all.
Can you send it to me again, so I can look at it?
Yeah, I did send it to you, didn't I? Okay, all right, okay, yeah. If you send me a text and remind me to send it to you again, Joan, I will. I'm happy to do that. Don't do it now, I'm not going to look at it. Okay. And Laura?
July sixth, is July fifteenth and sixteenth, is that correct?
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't think I can do that.
Okay, maybe they'll tape it. And the next thing that comes right after that is the conference, um, for November. And Arlen has already reserved us two spots. And we can talk about who would like to go now, unless you'd rather wait till September. I know Jill wants to go.
Uh, two things, uh, thank you, uh, those who are responsible, such as Arlen, for being on top of our savings, you know, if we reserve now by July fifteenth, that we save money, and yes, I am definitely interested in going. Uh, maybe that is a future agenda item, not only who's going, uh, but also Maybe that is a future agenda item, not only who's going, but also who's going to be the delegate?
Okay, maybe September, we can put that on the agenda for September. And talk about it then. I can't wait for that meeting. Then the last, last two things, one is the municipal community relationships and that's a big one. I think after, after our town meeting and after our vote, I'm feeling like we have communicated incredibly well and we were listened to by our community very, very well. It would be nice to have somebody from the finance committee come to our meetings from time to time. And also somebody from the select board to come. And it could be as simple as just deciding we would like to extend an invitation. I could write a letter to them and say, you know, our meetings are open. We would love to have you there. Anytime you want, feel free to join us. And keep it loose for now. Because clearly, we have been heard and that's, that's great news. I just want to make sure they all know you know, what, what's going on. And I think they, they do at this point, so that's really good. And Brooke?
Thank you. And I think one of the things that we really want to encourage is in all of our communities is just a gentle reminder that the regional committee, because of course, you also vote for that budget too, right? The regional committee has its own special subcommittee that oversees a budget and warrant and finances in general. And they meet regularly with Giovanna, and those are always open public meetings. And so they can't take part in them, but they can certainly sit back and watch it unfold. And especially during the months of January, February, those are key times. If you want to watch how that regional budget is put together. I would really encourage anyone to go into those particular meetings and just watch them unfold. Now, those aren't televised, but they are open and there's always room around the edges for people to sit in and and take them in. So we just want to encourage people to attend those next year, too. Thank you.
Well, we can work on some letters in September sending out. For sure. Brooke?
Just one other thing. Sorry, I know that Arlen is in the process too of working. We're looking at having monthly meetings through September, October, and November with all of our town administrators and myself and anyone else that we would normally bring around the table. Sometimes Giovanna goes to those types of meetings, sometimes Dr. Millen does. It just kind of depends on what the discussion is. So Arlen is reaching out right now, and I think some of the dates, I think, are already set in stone, if memory serves me right, for the first three months of the school year. So I'd want you to know that we've done that, too. Thank you.
And would you like school committee members to be part of that?
I don't think that's necessary, but thank you very much. I think if we find ourselves in a position where we think it might be a good idea, I think definitely. I think this is more nuts and bolts type of discussion type thing. And very often, too, on occasion, they'll bring their, their directors of finance along as well, depending on what it is. So, you know, for example, we had one meeting that was really oriented just towards the region. It had to do with the building and some other things. And at that point in time, we actually did bring Chris Easley and Judy Schumacher to the table to help us at that point in time. So I think it just depends on the conversation and what the topic is of the day. So but certainly, always welcome to attend. Thank you.
Maybe we could consider as a school committee inviting our new town administrator to a meeting, not in September. But to a meeting in the fall to, to meet us and, and talk to us. Might be a good idea.
Good idea.
Somebody's going to remind me of all these things.
Arlen's taking notes.
Because I'm sitting on the floor. Thank you. And anything else about communication? Town and community communication. All right, lovely. Our last agenda item before we report is our expenditure review. And that's Giovanna.
Thank you, Martha. Let's go directly to page eight of the report, please. The prior month balance was a hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. We spent or encumbered since last month's reporting ninety six thousand one hundred and seventy four dollars, leaving a balance of ten thousand five hundred and eighty six dollars. I will identify the line items that had more than a thousand dollars changed since last month's reporting. Starting on page one, towards the middle of the page, line item four zero zero nine, Supplies General Office, we spent or encumbered twenty one hundred and twenty five dollars since last month's reporting. We did some purchasing of paper. Typically, we purchased paper with the Bonneville County bid. That bid came in higher than we're currently paying for paper in this fiscal year. So the bid was rejected and all the members of the Bonneville County decided to either make purchases with the current contract in place with WB Mason or go elsewhere for their paper, a different vendor. Moving on to page two, at the top of the page, line item four zero one four, Salaries Teachers, we spent or encumbered twenty nine hundred dollars since last month's reporting. At this time of year, the payroll coordinator, Sue Wallin, makes various adjustments to contracts. As if an item was missed, and this may be one of those items. The next line item, and towards the middle of the page, four zero six seven, Special Education Contracted Services Medical Therapeutic. We spent or encumbered a thousand ninety three dollars since last month's reporting, and that's all based on student needs per their IEP. Line item four zero one seven, Substitute Teachers, we unencumbered funds here, we projected for the remainder of the year, thereby putting back into the bottom line thirty five hundred and twenty five dollars. We did this with all the substitute line items as well. Moving on to page three, line of four zero two three, Substitute Professional Development, we unencumbered funds in this line item. We didn't use anything this year, and that put twenty three hundred and forty dollars back into the bottom line. Line of four zero two six, Textbook Software Media, we spent or encumbered two thousand twenty eight dollars since last month's reporting. Line of four zero two seven, Other Instructional Material, we spent or encumbered twenty three hundred and seventy one dollars. And finally, on that same page, four oh seven four, Special Education Other Instructional Material, we spent or encumbered seventeen hundred and seventy four dollars since last month's reporting. Moving on to page four, at the top, four zero two eight, Instructional Equipment, we spent we encumbered thirty five thousand seven hundred and fifty six dollars, and this is based on the need for technology equipment, iPads, hover cams, headphones, laptops, smart boards, interactive screens. These purchases were made based on the recommendations of our tech coordinators and the building principal. There were funds available within the budget to enable us to do this. So you'll see that. And this is all part of the year end planning, which I'll go over after the expenditure report. The next line item, four zero two nine, Supplies General, we spent or encumbered twenty three hundred and eighteen dollars since last month's reporting. Four zero seven six, Special Education Supplies General, we spent or encumbered a thousand eighty one dollars since last month's reporting. Moving down toward the bottom of the page, line of four zero eight one, Special Education Salaries Guidance. Here, we put back into the budget thirty three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, and that was due to reclassification of the salaries to the REAP grant, which was set to expire June thirtieth. So this allowed us to put more money into the bottom line. Therefore, we were able to obtain additional technology items that I described previously. Moving on to page five, towards the bottom of the page, line of four zero eight seven, Special Education Preschool Transportation. Here, we, since last month's reporting, we expended thirty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty seven dollars, and that is all part of the year end planning process whereby we are prepaying for special education transportation costs in this fiscal year for fiscal twenty three. Finally, four zero three five, Special Education Out of District Transportation, there was an adjustment here. We spent four thousand dollars since last month's reporting. Moving on to page six, line of four zero four nine, Substitute Custodial, here we unencumbered funds totaling twenty two hundred and twenty eight dollars that were not used, and that went back into the bottom line. Four zero five zero, Overtime Custodian, we spent on encumbered seventeen hundred and eleven dollars since last month's reporting, and that is due to the need for coverage for absences and additional on time required to clean. Line item four zero five two, Supplies Custodial, here we spent on encumbered twenty six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars since last month's reporting. This is a combination of items. And here, we purchased custodial supplies totaling sixteen thousand one hundred and forty one dollars. We also purchased a grasshopper mower unit, and that was purchased with forty eight hundred and fifteen dollars out of the operating, and the rest came out of capital from prior year funds that were repurposed for this purchase for fifty six hundred and twenty five dollars. Moving on to page seven, at the top of the page, four zero six two, Electricity. We projected up for the remaining month of the year, and we were able to put back three thousand dollars into the budget since last month's reporting. Finally, on page eight, towards the middle of the page, four zero eight eight, Special Education Preschool Tuitions, part of the year end planning process. We prepaid in fiscal twenty two, three months of preschool for the fiscal twenty three year, and we prepaid seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty six dollars. Any questions on the expenditure report?
Anyone? No? Thank you, Giovanna. I always want to applaud when you finish. Thanks so much. Hey, I think we can move on to reports and information. And Jill, is there a collaborative report? And while we do that, Jill, would you talk about the strategic planning process?
Right now, it's on pause. When I know something, I will share. Okay, so there's been two meetings since we've had our meeting. So Wednesday, May eleventh. There was a meeting where the results of the executive director's evaluation was shared. Paul Hilton has been on board for thirteen years. There's a different rating for his evaluation. And out of a total of five being the highest, ratings from one to five. His average was four point nine two five. In leadership, he got four point eight seven five, also the same in crisis management and operations. And oh, yes, and the rating five would be highly effective and one would be room for improvement. He got a five in financial management and community relations. And what came across in the open ended comments? He, a team leader, collegial. Okay, so for renovations for the South Yarmouth property, unfortunately, there's only been one bidder. It's CJM Services out of Norwood. And significantly more money, no surprise, because of inflation, about eight percent, and supply chain issues, diesel fuel. And so on. Right now, the sandwich lease has been extended through December and in January. Hopefully, it appears that the South Yarmouth site will be open. I'm pleased to announce that we now have a regular representative from the Truro School Committee, from Truro School Committee, Colby Blim has been a nice regular member now, because for the longest time, nobody was coming from Truro to represent Truro. Okay, so once again, there's been an uptick in COVID and COVID related issues for driving. So three drivers from the Upper Cape have been affected and six drivers from the Lower Cape have been affected. And no subs whatsoever at this point for drivers. So people have been shifted around. Very challenging for the drivers. There will be an all cape as professional development. Content, content coordinators have been hired and they're identifying presenters for the October all cape professional development. And at the moment, so far, there's many nationally known presenters that have been hired for the all cape professional development. This summer, one hundred and seventy eight ASLP, the Leadership Program at Mass Maritime that the collaborative coordinates and does are slotted down to, are committed. Right now, it does look like students will be staying at the dormitories. A big transitions, we're losing our business manager, who's been there for quite a while, Amy Lipkind. And we're also losing who has been quite special and there for a very, very long time. We're losing our administrative assistant, Beth Deck. So that's going to be a huge transition. There might be some reorganization as far as the roles and responsibilities. The meeting on Wednesday, June eighth, basically whenever the budget and spending plan and handbooks, approval of handbooks, parent and student handbook, policies and procedures manual for public day program, waypoint code of, of conduct. Star program, emergency response, employee handbook, transportation response handbook, healthcare policies. So that does it. And there will be, unless there's something very important that bubbles up right now, there will be no meetings in July or August.
Great. Thank you, Jill. Thanks a lot. And Brooke?
Thank you. Just, and I don't have a question, Jill, and I'm thrilled for Paul. He's a wonderful man. He really is. So that's really nice to hear that that was acknowledged. And just very quickly, as part of the FY twenty two expenditure report review, we missed something and we realized it right away, and that would be the year end planning that kind of ties in with it. And even though Giovanna did review that, I think that she would just, she has a couple more additional comments, I think, that she needs to make on that. So if you're okay, if you could just fit her back in at some point in time, a chairperson, Gordon, we really appreciate it. That was our oversight. We realized it very quickly. As soon as Jill started talking, we realized that we thought, oh, my gosh, we forgot that the year end planning piece didn't get, it didn't get tucked in there like it should have. So I would, it's not a separate item. It ties into the expenditure reports.
If it's okay with everyone, please let's do it now because I don't have it written down and I will forget it again. So. Giovanna?
Thank you. So let's slide at the top. I mentioned most of these items during my report. So as part of the year end planning process, we look at our balances, we look at our encumbrances. And Principal Rodman and myself, along with the technology directors, look at the needs of the building and what's needed for next year. And this year, we did have some funds available to make some big technology purchases. So the first item, technology equipment, we purchased iPads, ten pack and cases, two desktops, fourteen laptops, two portable smartboards, three hover cams, and twenty five computer lab headphones totaling thirty six thousand dollars. We also purchased supplies, instructional technology, four thousand dollars, office supplies. You had me mentioned about the office supplies earlier in the paper, five thousand dollars. Supplies medical, a thousand dollars. Custodial supplies and equipment, I mentioned that the purchase of the equipment needed and as well as the supplies, twenty one thousand. Contracted services, building, a thousand. Fuel oil, typically, we cap out at the end of the school year for next year, eighty three hundred. Curriculum materials and supplies, general and special education, sixteen thousand. We prepaid the special education transportation, forty thousand. We prepaid the special education pre K tuition, three months, seventeen thousand two hundred. We purchased after school childcare supplies, three thousand, for a total year end planning of a hundred and fifty two thousand five hundred dollars. The current balance that we have in the budget is eighty one hundred and fifty five dollars. And that, I looked at that prior to the meeting this evening.
Thank you so much, Giovanna. Thank you so much, Giovanna. Thank you. Uh our next report, uh does anybody have any questions or comments or praise? Yay, Giovanna. Thank you. Um the P T A liaison is not here. Um Mary Beth, is there anything that you would like to say?
Um just said we're going to miss Charity Robinson, who has been our P T A president for the past five or six years. And she is just an incredible leader. She has such kindness, talent, capacity. And she does everything with such ease. You know, she never shows her stress or anything. So I was there uh Saturday morning to help with the setup for West Fest and I heard it was a grand success. And she sent out today um a reminder for the bonfire that happens uh down at Newcombe Hollow on the last day on the thirtieth. And I think that starts at five o'clock. So um she's going to be sorely missed for sure. I'm glad that she's still living within well played. And um her youngest daughter is off to the middle school. So we're very grateful to her.
Incredible. Yeah. Thank you, Mary Beth. Joan?
Yes, I know we're running late, but I have to tell you that when I my husband and I volunteered for West Fest and it was wonderful. And we did tickets because I love doing tickets and money. I it's my thing. And so. But when I volunteered, Charity said, where do you come from? Because she saw the four one three. And I said, Amherst. She said, oh, that's where I come from. She said, um. I said, what school did you go to? Fort River. Oh, that's where I taught for thirty two years. She said, I know you. And she said, oh, my favorite teacher, Roger Waugh. We just got into this whole wonderful thing. So her husband is from Wildwood, the other elementary school. She's from Fort River where I was all that time and got to meet her for the first time at West Fest and it was just lovely. So small world.
I like that. That's great. And thank you. Any any questions at all from Mary Beth or anything? Okay, behavioral health task force. Joan?
Um, okay, I I I love this committee. Um I I will say that most of our conversations. Right now have been on the middle school, high school, but with an intention to make sure that we hit the elementary. With more impact. Um but it was um so many people have been hired to help with behavioral health. Um and I could go through them, but not not so much necessary. Signs of suicide was just done for the first time in three years and that's going to be partnered with the P E and the health people. Um I'm just, I'm so impressed with um the the care that's being put into it. Um one of um the people from Gosnell, Nate, is going to have office hours um in the summer. So that some of the kids that he's been working with can continue. Um there's also Sharon Ahern. She's going to continue twenty hours a week with telehealth during the weekends in the summertime. Care solos will continue over the summer for extended school year. Um with an adjustment counselor and a school psychologist. Um everything is going to be held at the middle school, I think, for efficiency sake um this summer. Um and uh there's a contracted psychiatrist, tell me if I'm wrong, who's done risk assessment and placement and recommendations. Also, that's been very valuable. In addition to um functional behavioral assessments are um are being done. Um we spent a lot of time, I think, um talking about about mentoring. Um and um looking at how, well firstly, we spent some time looking at with all the new things that are being put in place. How do we know if it's making a difference? And one of the things was a program called a cloud based program called Panorama. That has a way of tracking um all of this so that you can actually look at whether this is making a difference. All the money that's being put in, all the services being put in will make a difference. Um and um. So that 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 was good to know. Um we talked about uh every elementary schooling ha- having uh step for respect. And then in addition, some of the elementary schools have common choice or the ruler, other programs. So that there's a consistent program through the elementary schools, but also add-ons for individuality between between the school. There is something being done at the high school called Portrait of a Grown Up, which is sort of, um I'm not exactly sure if it's um. It it's a program, right? Um Brooke, that um it's a it's a program that I think works backwards. So you're a grown up. What do you need to do to have gotten there? So it's a backwards planning, the way we teachers backwards plan sometimes, right? Um and that seemed like a very good idea. Also Landmark, which I can't speak enough about, has um been doing some workshops for people on executive functioning. Which I think is really a great place to put your money. But um this is an editorial. Um and they also do summer workshops. Um I told my daughter and she's there's one online even this summer. From Landmark on executive functioning, but they also have workshops at the conference center and on the circle in Hyannis during the summer. And I can't imagine that they're not fantastic because the I their programs are great. On the way of explaining things. And then lastly, we talked a lot about mentoring and how. Um and we will continue to talk about mentoring and invite the principals and assist uh principals of middle school and high school. Particularly about high risk kids and connecting them with a principal, with assistant principal, with a cafeteria per person. Teachers that are willing to do it um and making that special one to one connection. And helping mentor some of the kids that are having a more difficult time um getting through life in general. Um and then we extended it to whether kids from the up from the middle school or high school or even some. Four Cs could come down and mentor kids. So cross age mentoring. So it's a discussion that we'll continue to have. We know we don't have power in curriculum, but we've got lots of ideas and enthusiasm about it. So I'm just hoping that 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 will um make it more doable. Yes, Brooke, yeah.
Sure. So I I I'm so glad that you you brought a couple of those things forward and I was just thinking um because of course all. All of that stuff runs out of our offices, right? So um I was thinking that Dr. Millen is on right now uh on the screen. And I think I I think I just texted her quickly and said, would you like to take half a minute here to explain panorama? Uh because this is the first time it's come up on on any of our school committee meetings. This is so brand new and Joan, you're just right out of the gate with it. First time it's come up. And and I think too, the whole notion of mentoring also ties in with M T S S, P B I S. And again, as we're looking at this through line, exact you said it so beautifully. Um I, Dr. Millen, I don't know how you felt as you listened to Joan's speak tonight, but you didn't you think this is exactly what we are looking for? We have been working so hard to try to get a through line between that elementary school, middle school, high school. And exactly as you're talking about the second step of whatever uh version of second step type thing. Um a- as that leads into M T S S and 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 in three years, I'd love to see M T S S or some portion or variation of our P B I S. At the high school so that there's a complete through line. Um and so but with that comes the notion of NOSIT time as well. And so um Dr. Millen, and that also ties in exactly, Joan, with what you're talking about. So. Uh Dr. Millen, you could just take half a minute. I know we're running late, but just half a minute to quickly talk about those two things. I would really appreciate it. And Joan, you did a fantastic job tonight. Thank you for your.
So it's obviously bigger than a half a minute, but I will do as fast as I can. But it's it's actually rooted even before that in your strategic plan. So right in your strategic plan, there is a um a goal, an initiative. That says all students will be connected to at least one adult at every grade level. So just with the mentoring and all of those things. So when we're talking about M T S S, which is multi tiered systems of support, we're talking at the whole child, so academic, behavioral, social, emotional. And sometimes attendance, it just depends on what might be out there. So all of these systems that Joan spoke about so lovely. Are pieces of a puzzle that help us make sure that we're making sure that every child matters, that every single child is seen. That we're progress monitoring achievement and growth. And that the system, some of these technological systems that are out where out there as far as platforms like Pan and Rama and stuff. Allow us to pictorially represent a child with all those data points without our teachers having to take all the time that takes to collect all these multiple pieces of data. And see a child altogether. So it's a really nice what panorama or any of these dashboards. Will allow us to progress monitor children from pre K through grade twelve in all the areas that we screen, we assess, we collect data, attendance, behavior. Referrals, all that stuff. And we'll be able to also progress monitor any interventions that happen with the child along the way. So if they have a a tier two, which is a little more intense intervention in reading, let's say in grade three. And all of a sudden they close those gaps and they're doing fine in four, five and six. And also in a screener or an end of unit assessment shows a gap is starting to develop. A grade six teacher can then go back and look at what the intervention was in grade three that was successful, either use that. You know, and put it into play again, progress monitor, see if it's working or try to attempt another intervention if it's not working. So they're really nice technological advancements in these areas that allow our teachers to do the work easier, faster and more sufficiently. And um explicitly to monitor each child. So nobody will fall through the cap gaps.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Millen.
There was a child as an example that Mary Buchanan spoke about that had whose parents were quite upset because they had been being bullied. And were close to not wanting to come to school. And it has turned around in three to four weeks and I asked why. And they said, because we connected them with a mentor essentially. Um and we listened closely and we dis- dispensed the information about how people need to be on this, eyes on this. And be respectful of this child's experience. But having people listen is just so huge. Um I could go on forever, but I won't. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much, Joan. And Robin, thank you. And I am actually going to call upon you again, my dear. Um so don't turn your mic off. Um we had a strategic planning meeting and it was on a night that I was working. So I had another Zoom meeting at the same time and on top of it. Um it was right after my son broke his heel. So I was helping uh babysit in Worcester. So I had all of this going on and somehow miraculously I did get a few minutes to zoom in. On um onto the strategic planning meeting and I can quickly tell you what I gleaned with half an ear. And I apologize for missing that meeting. Um I tuned in right at the point when you were talking, Robin, about um the training that staff was going through on deep learning. And that you had formed some sort of learning task forces where there were lead learners who were helping other people assimilate. Um the skills and the information needed to 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 be able to teach in this way. The other thing that that I remember from that meeting and I only because I have written it down is that. Um the task force, the um diversity, equity and um inclusion task force has added another letter. To the acronym. So it's now D E I B and the B. Um stands for belonging, which is something that I I think we talked about a few months ago. Um there was a chairs meeting with um Dr. Millen and the um topic was about this um group of people. Who are coming in to train all of us in the importance of belonging in a community. And um I can say as somebody who's been working with people who have substance use um disorder. And with that co-curring behavioral health issues, that feeling of belonging and connecting is so huge. Um that it just makes so much sense, both in terms of um D E I B. And in terms of behavioral health, it all ties in very well. And um. The rest of my notes are about my granddaughter. So I'm going to stop right there and ask Robin if there's anything, there must be things you want to add. Very sketchy report.
So you've got a lot in there for a sketchy report. So yes, we did meet as a strategic planning steering committee. There were only three people that could join us that evening. So I do have minutes to get out to the rest of the um steering committee. But um the just for the committee and the community's knowledge. The steering committee has done an implementation guide that we have been now collecting evidence on of completion of different exemplar steps. That we've been making along the way in various different places. So it might be at the Buffalo Elementary or it might be at the middle school, high school or any of the other elementaries. Um so it's live, it's on the um website, it's underneath my heading. So if you go to curriculum and you go in there. So over the next few years, we'll you'll see it. It's a living document. So it it will keep being filled in and we'll pull some things off. If we find a better example of a more forward, you know, of position that we've taken or more completion of different steps that we've gotten in order to take. Um to get to the goals or at least, you know, attempt to reach all those high goals that you have in your strategic plan. So it's a really nice way to show the community all the work and there's pictures, there's reports, there's agendas, there's videos. Um there's stuff. So it's a really interactive and people can really see where the work is being done. That's the only other thing I would add.
That's great. That's fantastic. That's so exciting. Um Jill?
I'm sorry, I need to leave the meeting. I I'm very late. I have a friend who's in a concert tonight and this is it. So I I really need to go.
Hi.
Bye bye.
We still have a quorum. We're okay. Have fun.
Just making sure. I'm so late already.
Okay, um anything else for strategic planning? The policy subcommittee met on um June sixth and um we went over two policies. Uh policy J H, which is the student absences and excuses policy. And a policy about um school committee communication. And those will be coming to you soon, not as soon as a couple of other policies that will be coming to you in September. That are now ready for a first reading by school committees. Um and we are not doing that this month because there was so much else going on and not. We are actually, I believe, we're the last school committee meeting. We're usually the first. This is really funny. But like the other school committees did not get to it either. So we decided we we'd all wait and um. Thank you to Arlen for letting me know during my last minute panic today. That's great. Um so that actually brings us to student council report, Joan. That's you again.
Hi there. Much of what 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 um Mary Beth has talked about is is already out there. So I'll just try to hit on a couple of things. Um one is that there will be a summer school program that's um for kids that have lost a lot of time. Um it's not mandatory or had high absences. Um and that will be at the middle school. Please correct me if I'm wrong on this. Um we, I think the thing that we, the events, we talked about the events that were happening and you know, after COVID, this is a huge thing. And I won't go through them, but they are community building and exciting. And some of the kids don't remember them ever being. You know, like their greatest don't remember that they ever had these events because it's too much time ago. So it's been an exciting end to the year, I think. It's a long year. I mean, long in terms of the end of June uh year. And then there was a lot of discussion about deep learning, which I would suggest anybody who's sort of interested in curriculum. Uh get a hold of and look at and it looks at um pedagogy, it looks at learning partnerships, the environment, also how to leverage uh digital. Digital advantages uh in a good way, making it impossible to do international learning also. Um and it has a base of uh looking at how to be how to look at curriculum being innovative. How to deliver models for the twenty first century, all of which are in the strategic plan, character, citizens, collaboration, communication, creativity and critical thinking. Project based learning. Um very exciting stuff. Um that uh I think is not necessarily new, but repackaged. Uh this is an editorial and put in a way that's very usable and exciting. So uh I think those are the key points. Mary Beth?
Mary Beth. Thank you. So at the middle school, um it will be the special education, the extended school year program. And at Eastham Elementary School will be for students who have had some learning loss. Okay. COVID, um isolation, et cetera. And so. And so that's a program that has been termed Rally. And it was implemented this school year. So we're fortunate to be able to continue that program over the summer.
Great. Yes, I have Rally, but I wrote down Rally and then I said, what does that mean? So I didn't say that. Anyway, it was a joy, joy to be part of this council.
Thank you. And this is a two-page agenda here. I think the only thing that's left, unless anybody has a question for Joan or for Mary Beth about school council, is to approve the minutes. Brooke, I'm going to ask you to make sure I'm right here. We did everything.
Yeah, just any future agenda items that might be out there, do let either Martha or myself know. We'd appreciate that. So yeah, rate to the minutes. You're good to go.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting in May? Anybody? Thank you. Any second? Joan, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, right, there are only, I keep saying more, there are only three. Who's not voting? Okay. And we can move on to adjourn?
No. No, you want to executive session?
I forgot.
That's okay. So you're going to move into executive session and you'll adjourn from executive session. So you won't be back into public session and it should be very short.
Just like me. Can I have a motion to move on to executive session then? Somebody who's not me on the school committee?
I'd love to move on to executive.
Thank you, Jim. And a second? Thank you, Laura.
And we will keep Dr. Millen and Arlen in on this session as well.